The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
... of the council meeting held on May 9th of 2022. Thank you, Counselor Frank, seconded by Counselor Cernick. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have with us this evening, Sheila Fillion. Did I say that right, Sheila? Awesome, thank you, with Virtus Group. And she will talk to us tonight about our audited financial statement. Again, welcome Sheila, and please take her away.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I am Sheila Fillion with Virtus Group, and we were your appointed auditor for the 2021 fiscal year. So, thank you for including us on your agenda to talk about the draft financial statements. They were included in your meeting package, so hopefully everyone's had a chance to look at them. While accountants really love numbers, I'm not sure you want to spend the amount of time that I would like to spend on them, so I thought I'd just make some brief comments about the statements for your consideration. So, the statements are prepared under Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards, and the format of the statements is the one that's provided by the ministry, so that's why they look the way that they look. Overall, for the city, for the end of the year, the accumulated surplus increased by $3 million to end at $104,854,455. So, that is an increase from the previous year, which is positive. Also, during the year, for the statement of operations, revenues and expenses were very stable, other than your capital funding was lower, as recognized as revenue during the year. So, at the end of the year, there was an overall surplus of $2.98 million. So, the statements also include notes and a number of schedules that provide a breakdown on each of the figures on the statement of financial position and the statement of operations. So, if you're curious about a particular area, there's lots of information there, so I certainly don't propose to go through them individually with you. So, from an audit perspective, subject to council's approval of the draft financial statements, we do plan to issue a clean or clear audit report, which states that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects, the financial position and the activities of the city for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021. So, in closing, I'd just like to give a big thank you to the management team. Of course, with a new auditor, we ask new questions and ask for a lot of information, and we really appreciate their time and effort in terms of helping us get to know you a little bit better and complete the audit in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you so much for that, Sheila. And I know in the past, when we had audits, we didn't always get the stainless steel, maybe you could do this better, maybe you might want to do this. Did you have anything you'd like to suggest that we could do better? I know we have great staff, and they do an awesome job, but like any of us, we can always maybe do something a little better?
So, certainly, we provided a couple, a couple, three very minor points to management for their consideration. There were no significant issues or concerns with respect to the financial reporting, so we don't have any areas of improvement that are significant or concerning to us.
Okay, well, thank you so much for that. Again, it speaks to our staff and the fantastic job that they do. That's great. We'll open the floor for questions. Go ahead, Counselor Clark.
Thanks, Worship. And I'm not sure if this is to you or more, or just the directors. So, when we have the surplus, does it end up going back to paying down debt, or does it stay in limbo for the year?
City Manager?
Thank you, Counselor Clark. I can expand a little bit on that. So, our surplus amounts relate to also our capital assets. So, the number we continue to look at from an administration standpoint is our net debt. So, our net debt has reduced again from 18 million to 16 million this year, about one and a half million. So, those surpluses are just like, you'll see the cash and temporary investments are at 4.9. Those get carried over. There is some additional accounts payable and projects that go year over year, so we like to keep that kind of buffer. At that point, we haven't really applied it to anything other than our normal operations as a contingency fund, so that's generally what we do with the excess cash at the year.
Thank you, City Manager. Does that answer your question?
Yes, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything to add, City Treasurer? No? Okay, super. Okay, Counselor Vroba, then Counselor Frank.
Thank you, Worship. I just wanted to say thank you to all of the management team, because based on this budget, it literally shows us that we have done well, especially during a year of COVID, and especially with all of the hardships in supply issues and everything that we had. Basically, I wasn't expecting it to really look that good in all of the different areas, and it does, and so we were still able to pay down debt, and so kudos to all of the management team for your hard work in making sure that we stay on track.
Thank you for that, Counselor Vroba, and I echo that again. You know, we were at one point at some 47 million in debt, and we have consistently, thanks to council and staff, taken off about 2 million a year, and now we stand at this amount, which is fantastic, so we appreciate that. Counselor Frank?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just further to the debt conversation, and maybe you know this, maybe you don't, and I won't be sad if you don't. Obviously, yeah, we're very grateful to not be at 47 million in debt. That was us drowning. We're now in a situation where we have a great plan to pay off debt, and of course, no debt is a dream, but do you have a rough idea in terms of just our revenue-to-debt ratio? Are we in a good standard or good point compared to other communities? Are we still a little bit of ways to go? Is that something you'd even want to speak to? Maybe City Manager has something more to say on that, too, but just...
Thank you for the question. It's not really something I can comment on. Every community is different in terms of their plans and their investment in the community, so generally, if you're able to pay down debt, that is a positive. It shows that you're managing your current resources in a way that allows you to do that, but I can't really compare you to other communities.
City Manager?
Thank you, Counselor Frank. So, yeah, obviously, we have very large expenditures about nine years ago in the reservoir in Affinity Place, so we're coming back from the debt situation. Other cities you see had cash reserves, there are no spending in those infrastructure and bringing it down. So, I think all the cities will be submitting their financial reports to the government over the next month or so, so what I can do is I can get copies of those, and we can do a comparison in close council to discuss.
For sure. I guess just a little bit of a, maybe this is, and I don't know if it's just an accounting general idea, but is there a ratio that we would like to see us at in terms of what a manageable amount of debt is, or just where we're at? Not really. That's maybe that's a tough question. It's kind of a very big, I get it.
Yeah, I would suggest Counselor Frank can answer to that. No debt, and we're well on our way to that.
For sure.
But most cities are carrying a pretty heavy debt load coming out of the pandemic, and a lot of the cities suffered and spent a lot of money, they had to, over the pandemic. Thankfully, we were not one of those.
For sure. Yeah, I guess, and you know, really what I'm hoping to be able to convey to the community, and I totally understand that it's probably not apples to apples, but that I know we're in a good situation in terms of our infrastructure, a better situation than we were in terms of our finances. While we carry some debt, we're certainly not in a situation where we're drowning by any means, which is a good thing, and of course, no debt's still our goal, but no, we're not, we're not in a struggling situation anymore, which is great.
Exactly. We have a bit of breathing room now, thanks to council and our staff.
So, perfect, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, Sheila, see, you did such a great job. You wrapped this up in no time. Usually, we stumble around for about an hour or so, so that was great. Much appreciated. And again, as I always say, you're more than welcome to stay for the complete meeting, but I do understand if you want to exit stage right, totally get it.
I believe I'm joining you a bit for the closed session, so I'll be able to...
Oh, right, so you're stuck, you're stuck.
... to watch all of it. Thank you.
Gotcha. Okay. You could even have a break, but I do understand that. Thank you. Okay, thank you, City Clerk. Could we have a motion, please, to accept this report? Thank you. Counselor Wollieser, seconded by Counselor Clark. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have from Rotary Club of Estevan, the events permit for June 24th, 2022, at Affinity Place. What's the wish of council on this? Do we have a motion? Thank you, Counselor Cernick.
Motion approved.
Okay, thank you. Have we got a seconder? Thank you, Counselor Ford. Any further questions or comments? If not, ready for the question? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Next, from the Black Grasshopper, the events permit for July 2nd, 2022, parking lots. So, we are requesting approval for an outdoor event permit. We would like to host another parking lot party similar to last year on July 9th, 2022, from 8:00 PM to 2:00 AM. There will be live music, a bar, multiple porta-potties, that's always good, multiple picnic tables, and food available. Thank you for your consideration. Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, Worship. I think it sounds like a great night, and I'm assuming we've already spoken with the police chief to find out if they're okay with this. I just wondered, because last year, we made sure that they were aware of the event, just to make sure we have appropriate staffing members on for that night?
Yeah, and that's a fair point. Probably what we will do is give the chief a heads up, and then he will plan accordingly.
And I was just also curious if because the last time it was held outside with the live music, it's not normally an area of the city that has loud music? Did we have any complaints because of the loud music from the hotels or anything in that area?
Yet. My understanding, Counselor Vroba, we did not.
Okay, then I would make the motion that we go ahead and approve this.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Counselor Frank. Thank you, Counselor Frank. Any further questions or comments? If not, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Next, we have from the Exhibition Association, Energy City X Beer Gardens. And would you please ask or add this to the agenda? The Beer Gardens will be held in the Beer Gardens on the ground, starting on Thursday, June 9th, to Sunday, June 12th, inclusive. The permit times will be Thursday, 2:30 PM to 2:30 AM; Friday, 2:30 PM to 2:30 AM; Saturday, 1:30 PM to 8:30 PM; Sunday, June 12th, to wrap it up, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. From Brenda Monti, so what's the wish of council on this? Who would like to lead this off the exhibition? Okay, well, I guess we have Counselor Frank and Counselor Cernick. Thank you, gentlemen. Any further questions, comments? If not, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, next, from, again, the Estevan Exhibition Association, community event permit, June 11th. Would you please add this to the agenda? Energy City X Cabaret will be held in the indoor arena on the Estevan Exhibition grounds, June 11th, 2022, 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Again, from Brenda Monti. Thank you. Counselor Frank? You'll make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I was just also going to say, I'm just very excited to have our fair back this year after a couple of years hiatus. This has been painful because they had exciting news right before COVID, that they were going to extend and move to a better time, and now we've gone two years patiently waiting for it. So, very, very excited to see that they get to come back with a better fair than ever, and hope everybody goes out and really supports it this year to help them catch back up after the last years.
Absolutely, and even though, what are we on now? COVID-6, 7, 8, 9, 10? I mean, it is slowly dying out.
I think we've moved to monkeypox now, Your Worship.
A pox, and you're probably for bringing that up, eh?
Yes.
I think we have a seconder by Counselor Ford. Okay, any further questions? Did you have a question, Counselor Vroba?
My question is back to the Grasshopper event, but, so I'll let us finish this, and then I'll go.
Okay, okay, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, going back to the Grasshopper, Counselor Ford?
Sorry, my apologies. I thought it was, it says July 2nd on the agenda, but when I read the letter, it says July 9th. So, my motion was for them to have the party on July 9th, because July 9th, I can't see it as being a weekend with policing staffing issues. July 2nd possibly could be.
City Clerk, do we know for sure? But we can definitely find out.
Yeah, I'd just like to check, just, my motion still stands as long as...
July 9th.
Yeah, July 9th, if they want it for the second, then I think we need to talk to the chief of police before we approve that.
That would be the 9th.
The 9th, okay, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, no problem. Okay, moving forward, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have from the Estevan Bible Camp, the Bridge Project. So, I'll quickly go over this. Thank you for taking the time to read and consider. We are coming to you as we had a donor who felt the city may be interested in partnering with us. For anyone who isn't familiar with the Estevan Bible Camp, I'd like to give a brief overview of who we are. EBC has been serving Estevan and area as a place where kids can go during the summer and learn and grow since 1936. Our goal has been to provide kids with a safe and fun place to learn new things, a place to share with them, show them that they are loved by God. A detailed account of our history is available on our website for anyone who is interested in knowing more. However, I want to consider more recent and relevant events of what brought us here. In 2011, due to the flooding, the camp relocated from Rotary Park in Woodlawn to what is now called Lamb's Fold. This is the area across from the Baseball Diamonds and a space that was formerly used by the Boy Scouts. We have been delighted to work in this area provided to us by Woodlawn, and over the last 10 years have rebuilt and regrown our camp here. We have been able to partner with Woodlawn and other nonprofits, such as the Boy Scouts, in the utilization of this area. As we have grown, we continue to strive to meet the goals our camp was founded on and to serve these kids to the best of our abilities. To see them enjoying the great outdoors, whether rock climbing, archery, canoeing, or other activities such as crafts, chapel, et cetera, has been a pleasure. We want to see kids able to come to camp whether they can afford it or not, and many of our supporters have partnered with us in this effort. This even allows us to offer camp at no cost to those who cannot afford it. Through further generosity of our supporters, we have, for the last decade, charged less than what it costs for EBC for kids to come to camp. During the last few years, our proximity to Estevan has allowed the whole day camps that provide safe and fun-filled days for the kids, even in these difficult times. As a result, our camper numbers have grown, causing us to consider what our next steps are for the future. Recently, Woodlawn Park has confirmed with us that we can expand our activities to a portion of land across the Suris River on the north bank. This would give us almost half again as much space and provide us with much-needed area for our activities like archery, airsoft, and wide games. As well, it would allow for potential for new activities, such as orienteering, I'm not sure what that is, rope courses, and even paintball. The only restriction of this is a lack of direct access. With the river between our current space and a ravine cutting it off from the main road, our goal is to be able to build a bridge across the ravine. Isn't there a song about building a bridge? Anyway, this will allow us access for both people and maintenance equipment, so we can begin to develop and use this new area. After hearing back from Algonquin Bridge on a budgetary cost, we're looking at a cost of $45,000 for a bridge plus engineering and installation. We have started fundraising and preparing for the future building and installation of this bridge. As engineering and installation costs came, we calculated, or were calculating it quickly, it ran the project cost above our budget. We continue to look for a bridge design that would fit within our budget, and much to our delight, a local welding company provided us with a quote that is within our initial budget for an engineered bridge inclusive of installation. So far, we have raised $5,905 designated towards the bridge. If you decide you would like to be a part of this project, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you for your consideration. Counselor Frank?
Thanks, Your Worship, and I just wanted to give a little bit of information, just he used to be on this board, so I can just fill in a few details. So, this area that he's referring to is actually owned by Woodlawn, and all of the assets and everything are owned, including their building, and everything is owned by Woodlawn, and then they occupy the space and maintain it throughout the summers and do quite a bit of work. It's come a long way in the last 10 years from a very treat-in area, so, but it is kind of part of that Woodlawn group, which is something good to know about anyways, so they're a great group, and, yeah, I personally support, but I'll let the rest of council speak to it first, so...
Okay, thank you, Counselor Frank. Now, do we know what their lower cost is for the local company that's willing to do it?
I don't know that offhand. I just know it's within the $45,000.
I'm just wondering if we could maybe refer this back to them and have them come back to us at the next meeting with the actual cost, and maybe what they have raised to date, so that we can make a definitive decision, if that would be all right? Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, Worship. Actually, it's similar to what I was just going to say, is that I am on the Woodlawn Board with Counselor Clark, and it has not been brought up at the board that I'm aware of, and so basically, I think, from a request perspective, this is very vague, and I think, too, that I would like to see it come back, even maybe for next year, for third-party grants. I think they have quite a way to go to fundraise before they reach a point where we maybe would get involved, and I think Woodlawn would be a partner also, maybe. And also, it's in the RM Estevan, so they could be a potential partner. There's probably a lot of potential partners to make this happen. I think it sounds like a great idea, but I think there's a lot of Ts to be crossed and Is to be dotted before we would actually enter into any kind of a partnership-type thing.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Vroba. So, we can maybe look at this for next year, and in the interim, get the RM on side, get Woodlawn Park inside, maybe some partnering, and also find out what the true number is, because right now, we don't know. Okay, Counselor?
Thanks, Your Worship. Yeah, I'd like to see it go back to Woodlawn, where we can have that discussion with the RM. You know, I know we've done things and partnered with Woodlawn and partnered with the RM, but I think at least let us have some more discussion on it, and I would hope they got it at our next Woodlawn meeting. It'll be there, and then maybe we can even come back with some more information, but...
Great.
I don't think, I don't think I'm prepared to make a decision on it at this time.
Okay, so with that conversation, and thank you both, could we have a motion to table? Until the next meeting, we'll have more information, and even at that time, if the wish is maybe to get this built next year, then it would give us a timeframe to raise the right amount of money. Okay? Did you say you made that motion, Counselor?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, or Counselor Clark's making the motion. I'll second the motion, just, I think we just want more information as well, right? Which is what you basically said, so...
Okay, absolutely.
Counselor, yeah, Counselor Frank?
Thank you both for that. Counselor Frank, are you okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely. Actually, I was gonna, I was mouthing to Counselor Vroba. I was gonna say, I actually like the idea of even deferring to budget, like you said, there are little ways to hold on this. I think they've been fundraising for a couple of years now and dreaming of this project, so I don't think this is an urgent matter, so it does make sense for us to want to talk about it in our budget time rather than mid-year, and then we have lots of time to get information, get some other people inside. That'd be my thought, too, so...
Awesome, and if we refer to budget, then that'll be set the stage for next year.
You betcha, yeah. Let me can follow our process.
Thank you, so...
No, I'm in favor, that's why I said...
Okay, so, ready for the motion? Those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, moving forward. Under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have H, National Day of Truth and Reconciliation, September 29th. Again, just for information, we've been invited, or I guess I have, I would think all of council or whoever wants to come would be welcome, City Clerk. This will take place September 30th, National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. Oh, I might not be here, so then, if that's the case, then I will be requesting for someone off council to attend. But yeah, it looks great. A robust committee led by co-chairs Chief Kethmus Delorum, Chief of Conus First Nation, Tim Reed, CEO of the Regina Exhibition Association, formally requesting your gift of time and Unprecedented opportunity for our communities and the country to come together and share in the truth with the purpose of inspiring action for all of us to move forward and walk together in truth and reconciliation. And while we will bring over 15,000 high school students, business leaders, and the general public together from across our province and country in a momentous day. The city of Regina is a center point of Canada, and throughout this event, Regina has the opportunity to be the heart of reconciliation for our country. This will include survivor stories, music, drum, dance, keynote speakers, a presentation, and action to advance the 94 calls to action recommended by the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. Our goal is to fill Mosaic Statement for a historic moment of learning and sharing. So, that is great. As we get closer, we'll find out who can attend, and hopefully, most of council can attend. I think that would be a great occasion. Okay, so I don't think, City Clerk, we needed anything else on that? Okay? So, moving forward, under Written Reports of Committees, we have from the Southeast Transportation Planning Committee, the minutes of April 26th of 2022. Could we have a motion, please, to accept those? Thank you, Counselor Clark, seconded by... Thank you, Counselor Ford. Anything you'd like to add, Counselor Clark?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. Just, we are in a transition with Judy Riddell, who's been the administrator of that for, since pretty well the beginning that there has been Southeast Transportation, and they, she's stepped back, and Lorna Hill from Carleal will be the replacement to take her spot. So, there's a bit of a transition as we come into our AGM at the end of June, and Judy and Lorna will work on that, and from after the end of June, that'll be, Lorna Hill is the new employee of Southeast Transportation.
Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Clark. I'm sure she'll do a great job, but she'll have big shoes to fill. Judy did a tremendous job on that committee, as you can attest to, and was on there from basically the beginning. Okay, thank you. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under Written Reports of Committees, we have from the Southeast Regional Library Board, the minutes of April 9th. Do we have a motion from that? Thank you, Counselor Wollieser, seconded by... Thank you, Counselor Ford. You're our go-to person tonight from that side, guys. Pick it up, I'm just saying, the woman's making you look bad.
I always do.
All in favor? Carrie, okay, anything, Counselor Wollieser, you'd like to add?
Thank you, Your Worship. I was able to attend this meeting online. This meeting was really a celebration of the role that libraries stepped into during the pandemic, providing a lot of things that wouldn't necessarily be considered literacy, but are. So, for people who don't have access to computers or internet, who aren't comfortable accessing their vaccine passports, the libraries in southeast Saskatchewan were instrumental in teaching people how to access e-health, how to download their vaccine information cards, assisting people in securing rapid antigen tests when they weren't available other places. So, that was one aspect of literacy that they looked at, was health literacy, and how do we connect people in a really technologically connected world? The other category that they really focused on was how do we expand the concept of literacy through education opportunities for all ages? So, they have new called Everyday Literacy Kits, and they include things like, how does your municipal government work? What does it take to go to the dentist? How does Canadian currency work? They're all new kits that can be signed out from the public library and apply across the age spectrum.
Thank you for that, Counselor Wollieser. I know sometimes we don't appreciate everything the library does, but all of them things on top of the fact, they give access to people who may not have a computer, who may not have access to the internet, they help train them, so they do play a very important role in our community and somewhat unheralded. So, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you. Did we get a motion to accept that, City Clerk?
Yes, you did.
We did? Okay, awesome. Okay, moving forward, under Executive Reports, we have from Public Works, the Snow Removal Expense Report. Now, I know we were all worried with all them late snows, what we were going to get inundated with, but City Treasurer, I think, you know, we're pretty happy overall with this report. I think council would have to agree. It's not as bad as we thought it might be. Any questions or comments from Counselor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. I think this is just a good thing for the community to see when people say, you know what, our snow didn't clear the first or the second day of... first or the second day of, of the, of a storm or of an event, just to see how much gets put into overtime and wages and everything else. And I mean, we, we are a city that prides ourselves on quick snow clearing, but it does come at a cost. And I, I hope the public sees that and understands that when your snow doesn't get cleared for, for a number of days.
Yeah, that's a very good point. Again, we do a job second to none, and we'll take this opportunity to thank our staff again. They just do a tremendous job, and we ended up looking better than I know we thought budget-wise, but that's just an added bonus. Uh, Counsel Frank?
Thanks, your worship. Yeah, absolutely. I know one of the first years I was on council, we asked uh Norm a little bit about our snow removal budget, and he says, well, that's just a moving target. You can put any number in there, because it depends on how much snow you get. Some years you're gonna be way under, and some years are gonna be way over. But at the end of the day, we're always grateful that our snow was removed so well. Um, I think any costs we incur, we certainly see in terms of how our road conditions are in the spring. We've said that a number of times, so. Um, being a little over budget, I, I agree with you, this is far less than I was kind of picturing in my head, so. Pretty grateful, and we've been under budget for several years prior to this, so it just all comes out of the wash and at the end of the day, and everybody's grateful the snow was removed, so.
Totally, thank you. So could we, uh, with your indulgence, Counsel Ford, you make the motion, and Counsel Frank second for the acceptance of this report, if that's okay? Counsel Roba.
I just wanted to say just what Counsel Frank just said about the sta- uh status of our roads and the quality of roads that we have right now. I noticed this spring, we actually, for the first time in a long time, had a few breakdowns in a few different spots because of all the moisture we had. But we are so fortunate to have the road crew that we have, because I just recently traveled to another city in Manitoba, and they do not have the same degree of road structure that we have. When we talk about other cities that haven't invested in their infrastructure like Estevan has, we have a lot to be proud of here, because um, again, thankfully, I was driving a friend's car, because I had to dodge a lot of po- potholes, and not just on the odd street, on basically every street. So again, kudos to our staff here, because what we are doing, we're doing a very well, good job of it with the roads.
Absolutely, thank you, Counsel Roba. And it does, by keeping them clean, it does help on the pot, potholes issue as well. So thank you for that. Okay, uh, moving forward, under, oh, did we not get acceptance, please? Acceptance and approval? Thank you, thank you, City Clerk. Under executive reports, next, uh, from Land Development, we have the Home Daycare Application, twenty-two forty-two, Newcombe. So the landowner would like to open a daycare home as a secondary use to their residence. The property is adjacent to Veterans Park in Royal Heights neighborhood. The proposal is discre- discretionary use, pick, parking is pickup, drop-off, and will not be a problem. A referral was sent to surrounding landowners, and as of May eighteenth, no inquiries have been made. The recommendation, uh, it is recommended that council consider approval of development permit number DP zero-one-five dash twenty-twenty-two, subject to standard conditions. So what is the wish of council on this? Have we got a motion to accept? Thank you, Counsel Sernick. Have we got a second, or thank you, Counsel Weller, any discussion? Uh, if not, ready for the question? All in favor? Thank you. Next, under executive reports, we have from the Tax Assessor, uh, Trina, who's here this evening. Thank you, Trina, for agreeing to stay over, tendering of tax titled properties. Uh, first of all, we have three-ten-fourth, we'll probably take this one at a time, I would suggest, eh, Trina, if that's okay with you? So uh, under the provision of the Tax Enforcement Act, the city offered for sale by public tender, three-ten-fourth Street, Lot six, seven-eight, Block one-oh-three, Plan C three-nine-two-nine. Tenders closed Friday, May thirteenth at four-thirty PM. Public tender bid opening took place shortly after closing. The bids received, we have Coal Heath come, came in at twenty-one thousand and fifty dollars, and Prairie Dog Sales at forty-nine thousand dollars plus, they mentioned, they will clean up those few dilapidated buildings that, that are on the property. The outstanding property taxes, sixty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents, which includes eighteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-eight cents in penalties. The yearly tax levy with the property, excuse me, in current condition, would generate five thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-two cents. So the options we have, accept offer as presented, counter offer for full outstanding property taxes of sixty-four thousand, three fifty-nine, eighty-nine, or refuse bid. In this case, our recommendation would be option one, to accept offer as presented based on future revenue from property taxes and improve the appearance to the city. Counsel Frank?
Thanks, your worship. Um, uh, definitely agree with, and I would make the motion for number one. I guess the one question I have is, can we put that as a condition of the sale? I know they put that as part of their proposal to clean up those dilapidated buildings. You know, I, we, we've taken a little bit of a loss, but I think to get that cleaned up, we can't actually put that as conditional.
City Manager, thank you, Counsel, uh, Counsel Frank, we would have had to put that in the condition of the tender. That was just something that they noted, that if we were comparing tender submissions, we could maybe consider that. But to make that requirement, we'd have to re-tender, and I don't think we won't do it.
No, I, no, I'm happy to go with it as an act of faith, I mean, obviously, they proposed that on their own, so they, they clearly have that plan, and um, this is, you know, at a little bit of a lost us, but to see that area cleaned up, I think it'd be great, that they've been tenants there for a little while, so they um, have, have an invested interest in the lot, so I would make the motion to go, go to accept the offer.
Uh, Counsel Frank, thank you. Have we got a second, or Counsel Roba? Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, next, from our Tax Assessor, tendering tax title properties, we have seven-seventeen Third Street. Under the provision of the Tax Enforcement Act, the city offered for sale by public tender, seven-seventeen Third Street, Lot fif- Lot fifteen, Block thirty-one, Plan AG four-seven forty. Tenders closed Friday, May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at four-thirty PM, and public tender opening took place shortly after. Bids received, Shave Valeski, ten thousand dollars. Outstanding property taxes, fourteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-four point zero eight cents, includes three thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-three cents in penalties. The yearly tax levy with property in current condition would generate eighteen hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents, and that would be the twenty-one levy. Options, accept offer as presented, number two, counter offer for full outstanding property taxes of fourteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and eight cents, or refuse a bid. The recommendation is, our recommendation would be option one, to accept offer as presented based on future revenue from property taxes. What's the wish of council? Counsel Clark?
I'll make the motion that we accept the offer as presented.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Weller, you'll second that? Thank you. Uh, any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under executive reports, from the Tax Assessor, tendering tax title properties, we have eleven-eighteen Second Streets. Under the provision of the Tax Enforcement Act, the city offered for sale by public tender, eighteen, eleven-eighteen Second Street, Lot twenty-six, Block sixty-eight, Plan ten-twenty-two, four-eight, five-five-seven. Tenders closed Friday, May thirteenth at four-thirty. Public tender opening took place shortly after. Uh, the bids received are from Saint John the Baptist Parish of one hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. This tender document stipulates a condition, subject to property being exempt from taxation pursuant to Section twenty-six, two, in brackets, one, in brackets, E, of the Cities Act, used in connection with a place of public worship. Now, this used to be under the guidance of the Catholic Church, and I guess what they're suggesting, uh, if they get it back, that we honor the fact that they would not be, uh, paying taxes moving forward. Outstanding property taxes, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents, including fifty-two thousand dollars, five hundred and two, uh, twenty-seven of penalties. The yearly levy with property in current condition would generate nineteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-one fourteen. That would be if the church did not own it. Number one, accept offer as presented. Number two, counter offer for full outstanding property taxes of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents, or refuse a bid. Our recommendation, yeah, I've got you, Counsel Roba, uh, our recommendation would be option two, to counter offer for full outstanding property taxes of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents, given there is no future revenue to be generated on this property, because of course, once the church gets it back, that will be the end of property tax coming back to us. Counsel Roba?
Thank you, worship. So because we didn't have any other tenders come in, I think we have to take into consideration that if we walk away from this bid, they could also decide to walk away from the offer and not re-bid back of the two-thirty-six. And I think right now, there's some broken glass, there's some things happening over there, it's not really well-kept. And so I personally was thinking that we would just accept the hundred and fifty-one thousand, because if you take away the penalties, it brings it back down to about a hundred and eighty thousand, which is a similar to what we just accepted on Fourth Street. And also, this is a property that we have never historically ever except, collected taxes on. So I know this was a deal with another company, where whatever happened, they changed hands, and now it would be going back to the church's hands, which means we will not be accepting or collecting taxes anyways. So in the end of the day, the city would still at least get a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in back taxes that we had actually had in our budget. We, the penalties is, you know, it's penalties, and we would just be out the baby thirty thousand dollars in what our budgeting was, so. I don't, I just don't think we're a hundred percent guaranteed that they will come back to take this building, and I honestly don't want the city to end up owning this building. And I think if the church gets it back, then that glass, the windows, they would start to be repaired, the ground would be maintained, and the property would start to look as good as it did in the previous years when the church. So I would like to make the motion that we accept the hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar offer.
Okay, uh, a couple of things, thank you, uh, Counsel Roba. Uh, number one, the recommendation from our people would be option two, so you're going against the suggestion that's now on the table to counter offer for full outstanding property taxes. And I think the main reason for that was that moving forward, we won't be getting any more money from this property. As far as the glass and the ground, uh, we can pick that up and clean that up. The other option, if we did take the property, we have, again, an opportunity. It may not be taken, but to realize a lot more than this amount if we sold it to someone that maybe would be looking at, you know, uh, expanding that property, maybe fixing it up, maybe putting in tenants. You know, there's a lot of opportunity there for that space. You have that big gym, and I know that's what the previous contractor, uh, you're right, was looking at doing, was fixing that all up and renting it out.
Yeah.
Uh, but we have, uh, the motion now on the floor, so I'll entertain. Do we have a second? Okay, go, go ahead, Counsel Ford.
Uh, thanks, your worship. If we were to choose option two, and are they able to like counter back? Like, are, are they able, are able to say, no, we don't wanna pay the two hundred and thirty-six thousand, but we'll pay blank kind of thing, like would?
Okay, I'll, I'll turn that over to Trina. Good question.
Yeah, so that would be upon your recommendation, if you wanted to have, do a bottom line, if you wanted to.
Yeah, that would give us that opportunity, yeah. Uh, Counsel Clark?
Thanks, your worship. I'm going to second that, uh, motion, uh, so we'll have it on the floor.
Okay. Any other further discussion, comments? Uh, Counsel Ford?
I, I'm sure we have to vote on the first motion, but I, I think I would like to try option two, to give them the abil- and then give them the ability to at least
To counter.
To counter back, and then if, if we can't come to terms with it, then we come back here with it, like it's, it is a good chunk of money, but it's, it's worth trying, right? I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah, I, I agree. It's a large site, and a lot of that property is in pretty good shape. There is some water damage, but again, overall, the structure is in pretty good shape. Counsel Frank?
Thanks, your worship. I'm, I'm just wondering, and I don't know if they would have in this, but do they have, have they given any indication of what they would be looking to do at, with it, because my, my hope would be that they would be doing some development with it, that would actually be a little bit quicker to vote, um, with Counsel Roba, just to, um, I think it's going to a good purpose when there'll, there'll be some development with it, and I'd like to see it go to them, so. I, I'm, I'm open to both options, but I'd like to know, did they indicate at all what they planned to do with the property, or?
City Manager?
Uh, to Counsel Frank, um, since they stipulated that act, I would assume in the short term, it would be going back to church status. But you're correct, they could essentially work with a developer moving forward to turn it back to commercial, uh, 'cause once it changes use, it wouldn't fall under that category again. But they have not indicated that.
Okay. Yeah, and see, that's what I was wondering too, what their end use was going to be. But because it fell under the tender, it's not really up for us at this juncture to, uh, ask that question, because we're already at this point. Uh, go ahead, Counsel Weller.
Uh, my question is for the City Manager. Can you explain a little more where the, the missing responsibility comes? Out of these property taxes, is this just money that should have come to the city and didn't? Or is there bills to pay, say, for education, that the taxpayers of Estevan would be responsible to cover the shortfall back to the province?
City Manager?
Um, thank you, Counsel Weller. I can confirm with Trina true, but my understanding is if we were gonna take these property, properties over, we would have to submit the education portion of the property tax. Um, whereas if we take a bid, we would pay the prorated amount that the tender was submitted at. Um, is that correct?
Yes, and the school portion is fifty thousand.
The school portion would be fifty thousand, I'll just.
Okay, uh, Counsel Roba?
I just wanna add that basically, just to make sure I'm correct on that, is that if we counter offer and they decline, they walk away from their original hundred and fifty thousand, the city gets nothing, and we are now owners of the building. So, and we could potentially sell it, however, I think that's what this tender was just trying to do, and we got one person bidding on it, so. My fear is we counter offer, they come back, and they're not interested, because you gotta remember, it's a group of people representing the church. So it's not, you know, it just, all it takes is half of those people are plus one, not to be eager to buy the building back, and then the city gets stuck with it, so.
Okay, Counsel Frank?
Thanks, your worship. My one last question, I guess, would be probably to City Manager, to Trina. Um, if we were to take it and then put it up for sale or put it up for auction, do you have a, like, I guess, would we put it up for auction? Will we weigh down a timeline on that? Just again, we're, we're occurring costs of operating that facility for that period of time, um, till it's sold.
City Manager?
Uh, uh, to Counsel Frank's, that would be a decision of council, how they wanted to move forward. If they felt that it was a economic development property, that they would like to wait for a developer to come in, you could do that, you could go to auction, you could. It would depend on how council would want to move forward at that point. Is there any stipulations after we own the property, Trina, for us to?
No, so we can, um, take it back for our use, but we would have to pay the outstanding taxes, so you would have to pay the schools.
The fifty thousand.
And then it's pretty wide open as to what we can do. Okay, any further questions, comments? Uh, seeing none, uh, we have the motion on the floor by Counsel Roba. Those in favor? Opposed? Okay, it stands. So, City Clerk, we got that down? The motion is passed. Okay, thank you. Next, under executive reports, we have. Yeah, seven-thirty-seven, right? Yeah, seven-thirty-seven, fourth. Okay, uh, background and discussion, we have, under the provision Tax Enforcement Act, city offered for sale by public tender, seven-thirty-four, fourth, Lot twenty, Block thirty-two, Plan AG four-seven forty. Tenders closed Friday, May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, four-thirty PM. Public tender opening took place shortly after. Outstanding property taxes, six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and sixteen cents. This includes one thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents in penalties. The yearly tax levy with property in current condition would generate eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents on the twenty-one levy. Options listed for sale by auction, number two, city to own property by paying school portion of property tax, number three, other options discussion. Recommendation, our op- recommendation would be option one, to list for sale by auction. What is the wish of council? Counsel Frank, and then Counsel Sernick.
Thanks, your worship. Yeah, I, I would agree with the recommendation to list this for sale by auction. I'm actually just a little bit curious, though. We, we have a few other properties in town that are similar to this, where there are a lot that are not in a newer area, um, which definitely, and maybe not necessarily desirable area, would definitely deter somebody building a new, probably larger house in those spots. Um, one being on Eighth Street. Street, and I'm sure there's probably a couple others. And we've held those for now a few years, and they're, they're not really going anywhere. I would wonder if we could maybe also consider putting some of those lots up for auction, maybe have a report come back to councils to what all we own, just to try to start seeing something happen. I know we've discussed in past of, you know, Habitat for Humanity having some of these or whatever. Obviously, these aren't lots we're going to get a great value for, because this one being on a corner on Fourth Street, the other one on Eighth Street, those aren't high priority lots, for sure, but it'd be nice to see them offloaded and see some development happen there of some sort, even if they, even if they just went for hard anything, so.
Okay, we can revisit that and get you that list.
But I will, yes, I will make the recommendation this go for auction.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Sernik, would you be seconding that? Thank you. Okay, any further questions or comments? If not, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under executive reports, and we have Shane here this evening. Thank you, Shane. We have, from the water tower, as they uncover more and more on this old building, this old structure, we're finding that it's not quite in as good a shape as we thought. But again, it's still cheaper than the alternative. So, Shane, did you want to give a brief overview, please?
So, the water tower, before I sent out the tender for work, we had engineers inspect it. Their inspection didn't foresee the, the beams being such poor condition. I attached to the report, and you can see by some of the pictures that there's heavy pitting, some of the beam sections are missing. So, it's something that needs to be taken care of relatively soon. It went back to the company, and basically, there's increased cost because there are no welders or workers around right now, so it's adding on a little bit of extra cost, because they're paying their guys overtime to correct the problem. The longer that this sits, the more cost we have on equipment just stand by, waiting for something to happen, which would be more expensive than the cost of the six hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So, it's a new problem. I got the quotes back on Friday last week, and then I am still working on a solution that would be beneficial to the city, on a perhaps bringing the cost down, but it takes time. So, what I'm asking for today is, the original budget was around two million dollars for the project. I'd like to see that increase to two point five million, and then I can kind of work with that and work with getting quotes from other companies to bring the cost down.
Thank you, Shane. And I think the other alternative you looked at was closer to what, three, four billion?
So, the expansion of Smith Street Reservoir, if we were to remove the tower completely, was four million three years ago. So, I would expect that to be about six or seven million now. The work has to be completed. So, like, when you drive by the tower, you see the scaffolding all set up, there's scaffolding all set on the inside, the trailers and everything like that. To reset that all up would be six hundred thousand, just to mob and demob, basically, the project. So, putting this off, even if it does come in, say, a hundred or two hundred thousand cheaper, we would still be paying that base mob and demob cost to do it later on.
Thank you, Shane. And I think some of the projects that we weren't going to do this year, we can realize some savings to help pay for this.
Yeah, we were waiting for a grant funding for Sixth Street and Fourth, and that hasn't come through. So, we had planned to do the undergrounds for that section on Sixth Street from Thirteenth to Fourteenth Street, and we will no longer be doing that. So, that's three hundred and twenty-five thousand that we can take from that to apply to this project.
Right, because it's already too late in the year now to, to move forward on that. Okay, thank you, Shane. We'll open the floor for questions and comments. Counselor Clark, and then Counselor Frank?
Thanks, your worship. Yeah, I, I have supported the recommendation that we find the money or increase the budget to two and a half billion and work on getting it done while we're set up.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. You'll make that recommendation? Thank you. Counselor Frank?
Thanks, your worship. Yeah, and I would second it as well. I think if we're, we're there, we said, kind of set a goal that this was the year we were going to get the water tower all up to snuff. We haven't done a lot of work to it in fifty, the fifty years. It's been there, so it's worth it. The one quick question I have, just maybe to city manager, of the two million dollar budget, how much of that did we receive in federal and provincial grants or?
City manager?
Thank you, Counselor Frank. So, every year, we see federal gas tax. That's been putting, put away and accumulated, so that's actually in a separate bank account that has to be on approved projects, and the water tower wasn't approved projects to use federal gas tax funds.
Two, two million of that.
Two million of it.
So, do we have, I'm assuming not, but do we have the ability to go back and apply for a little more out of that for this project, or?
Yeah, so, the, the federal gas tax will let us allow to, sorry, it'll let us allocate funds from the gas tax funding that we get towards that. It's not an additional amount. We get that unconditionally every year, and it's in our budget. It's not like our ISIP, which is like our pathways, whereas for a specific project, this is just we allocate a project for that funding to go towards every year.
Okay.
So, it's not additional money, but we can allocate it towards this project.
We've saved it for this project.
Perfect. Nope, yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of council? Saying none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. There you go, Shane. Thank you for coming this evening. Okay, next, we move to introduction of bylaws. We have bylaw twenty twenty-two dash twenty fifty-five, establish rate of taxation. This evening, we'll give that first reading, and then allow our community, our public, to have a look at it for a few weeks and then bring it back. A bylaw to the city of Estevan in the province of Saskatchewan to fix a rate of taxation, to be known as property tax bylaw. Whereas, section two fifty-three of the city's act authorized this council to annually pass a property tax bylaw to impose a levy on all taxable assessment in the city of Estevan at a uniform mill rate considered sufficient to raise the amount of taxes required to meet the estimated expenditures and transfers in regard to estimated revenues from other sources set out in the budget of the city, and at any other rates required by the city's act or any other act. So, that pretty much sums it up. So, this property tax bylaw may provide for A, minimum amounts payable as property tax, B, either a minimum amount of tax or a method of calculating the minimum, minimum amount of tax, and C, different amounts of minimum tax or different methods of calculating minimum tax for different classes or subclasses of property. And the education property tax requires the city to levy and collect against the properties and the school divisions, basically for the provincial government. Whereas, the city has received notice pursuant to the education property portion that the Holy Family, Family Roman Catholic Separate School Division intends to determine its own tax rates. Now, therefore, the council of the city of Estevan in the province of Saskatchewan enacts as follows. So, the taxable properties mean the properties that are not fully exempt from taxation pursuant to the city's act, pursuant to the Education Property Act of two thousand seventeen, on behalf of the school divisions for the year twenty twenty-two, the city levies the following tax rate on all taxable properties within each school division, using the property classes established by the lieutenant governor on council pursuant to the act. Now, the education tax has gone up, city manager, roughly what, three percent?
At least I'll defer to Trina and Trudy for the exact percentage.
Trina, what was it roughly, overall? About three percent? I know our tax didn't go up, but the province has probably taken up their education portion about three?
Yeah, approximately.
Approximately three percent, thank you. So, we've got agricultural property, one point four two mils, residential property, four point five four mils, commercial, six point eight six mils, resource oil, gas mines and pipelines, nine point eight eight mils. So, pursuant to section two five three of the city's act, the city levies at a rate of fourteen point eight mils per dollar on all taxable properties within the city of Estevan. In addition to the minimum tax payable under section six, raise the amount of money required for twenty twenty-two to meet the city's estimated expenditures. And then, we, they establish the following subclass, large commercial, multi-unit apartment, less than twelve, condominium properties, motels, motel, full-service mall, large enclosed. Then you go to the property classifications. You have non-arable range, one point one, other egg, one, residential, point seven two five, multi-residential condominium, point seven seven five, multi-unit residential apartments, four to eleven, one point four, multi-unit residential apartments, larger than twelve, one point five four two, commercial, industrial, one point five five zero, commercial motel, two point three, commercial motel, full-service, one point nine, commercial, commercial, large commercial, two point eight five, commercial mall, one point five, railway pipeline, two point five four. The minimum tax will be seven hundred dollars on taxable property assessed for both land and improvements. This bylaw shall be effective from January first, twenty twenty-two, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and will come into force on the day of the final passing. So, what's the wish of council on bylaw twenty twenty-two dash twenty fifty-five? Could we have a motion, please, for first reading? Counselor Groba? City manager, you have a comment?
Thank you, worship. Just to clarify, so, the, the percentage differences for residential is one point nine, and commercial will be one point seven, are the increases in education tax just from the province.
Okay, two and one?
Yeah, they, yeah, around two, around one point nine and one point seven, so around that two percent.
Okay, thank you for that, city manager. So, do we have a motion then for first reading? Counselor Groba and Counselor Ford, any questions, comments, observations? Okay, saying none? Ready for the question? All in favor? Thank you. First reading. Next, under introduction of bylaws, we have bylaw twenty twenty-two dash twenty fifty-six, provide special tax for the library levy. And again, this will be first reading this evening. So, bylaw twenty twenty-two dash twenty fifty-six, bylaw of the city of Estevan and the province of Saskatchewan to provide for a special tax for library levy and operations within the city of Estevan. Whereas, council of the city of Estevan deems it necessary and desirable to charge a special tax for the purpose of providing funding to cover committed amount required by the southeast regional library in the amount of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, which is roughly thirty-four dollars and seventy-four cents per capita. Now, therefore, council of the city of Estevan hereby enacts, a special tax shall be charged against each class of property within the city to generate approximately four hundred and one thousand dollars for southeast regional library and local library operations. Pursuant to section ten of the city's act, the special tax shall be charged at a rate of zero point three seven four mils, based on the current year's assessment, and any bylaws before or hereby appealed. What's the wish of council for first reading of bylaw twenty twenty-two dash twenty fifty-six, the library levy? Counselor Wollizer, you'll make that motion? Thank you. Have we got a second? Or, thank you, Counselor Sernik? Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under introduction of bylaws, we have bylaw twenty twenty-two dash twenty fifty-seven, to provide for special tax for health levy, first reading, again this evening. Whereas, under the authority, section two seventy-seven of the city's act, the city may pass a special tax bylaw for any specific reason. And whereas, the council of the city of Estevan deems it necessary and desirable to charge a special tax for the purpose of providing financial assistance to regional healthcare in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars that will benefit the entire city. Now, therefore, council of the city of Estevan hereby enacts as follows, special tax shall be charged against each class of property within the city to generate approximately one hundred and one thousand dollars for regional healthcare pursuant to section ten of the city's act, the special tax shall be charged at a rate of zero point zero nine four six mils, based on the current year's assessment, and any other bylaws on this topic are hereby repealed. City manager, this is quite a bit less than normal, correct? We lowered it?
Yes, thank you, worship. In the twenty twenty-one year, we've finished with putting away our obligations towards the nursing home, the one point, I believe, three million that was identified, so that portion of levy has been reduced. So, even though the school portion has gone up on the education side, we believe that most properties with the reduction in the healthcare levy should see kind of a similar, even a small decrease, correct?
Exactly. So, by lowering the health levy, in this case, which was already planned by council, our, our taxpayers will see just about a neutral. Instead of getting hit with a two, two and a half percent, it should be a lot less, which hopefully, they'll feel good about. I know no one feels good about paying taxes, but it's either death or taxes, right? Anyway, did we get to vote on that, city clerk? We don't have the motion either, so there we go. Thank you, Counselor Sernik, and thank you, Counselor Ford. We have the motion, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Now, before I run out of breath, under introduction of bylaws, we have bylaw twenty twenty-two dash twenty fifty-eight, provide special tax for bid levy, first reading. Okay, bylaw twenty twenty-two dash twenty fifty-eight, a bylaw in the city of Estevan and the province of Saskatchewan to provide for a business improvement district, in brackets, bid levy in the city of Estevan. Whereas, under the authority of section twenty-six of the city's act, the city may impose a levy to be used for business purposes within the business improvement district. And whereas, the council of the city of Estevan deems it necessary and desirable to charge a business improvement levy for the purpose of providing financial assistance to business improvement district, in brackets, bid, in the amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars that will benefit the downtown core. Now, therefore, council of the city of Estevan hereby enacts as follows, a business improvement district, in brackets, bid levy, shall be charged against each property as outlined in the boundaries in bylaw seventy-nine dash eight nine one, within the city to generate approximately twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for the business improvement district commitment at a rate of zero point zero zero one one five one nine five seven six seven. And although it sounds like a lot of numbers, it's really not that bad. Any other bylaws are repealed? What's the wish of counselor, council, Counselor Frank?
Sorry, worship. I'm going to declare conflict of interest, as this is a special levy, and I own a property within those boundaries, so.
Okay, let it be noted. Thank you, Counselor Frank. Counselor Frank is leaving council chambers. He will come back at some point in time later this evening, but for now, he's leaving. So, what's the wish of council on this? Counselor Groba?
Acceptance and approval, worship.
Okay, thank you. Have we got a second? Counselor Clark, thank you. Okay, are we ready for the question?
I have a, sorry, I have a comment.
Questions? Go ahead, Counselor Sernik.
So, if this is coming out of our third-party grants and going into a levy, would it be worth it to make it more?
Well, this is kind of the amount that we've done, city manager. Oh, it's my fault. Counselor Frank, you have to actually leave the chamber. Sorry, that's my bad. Sorry. Oh, we'll talk about your lots, but anyway, anyway, city manager.
Thank you, worship, to Counselor Sernik. So, we do a matching third-party grant for them. So, this, they actually pay this amount, and then we contribute a matching amount. It equals about twenty-seven thousand five hundred. So, I, it definitely could be considered, or just a third-party grant could be in excess of the match, too, so if you wanted to.
With the explanation, it can stand. We could revisit that if you like. In fact, who's our bid person? I guess, Counselor, yeah, if you wanted to bring that up, Counselor Clark, that maybe in the future, if they had something in mind, you know, maybe spending more money, that we could look at that type of option. Go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. I, I know that there has been some discussion about expanding the area that they cover. So, some of that might be part of the discussion to see, certainly with the, with the Cal Tire building, should that be included into downtown or into the bid proposals? And there might be some other areas that, that it might be necessary to expand into. So, I, I think we will be able to have that discussion at a bid meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. And I think another thing we maybe won't discuss a lot tonight, but with the old church, which I believe is for sale, that should probably be declared a heritage site, and that's something that maybe bid might be looking at, at looking at purchasing at some point in time, because we definitely do not want to tear that old Salvation Army church down. That truly is a heritage. That truly is a heritage site and something worth council discussing, I think, at a further date. I know it's for sale right now. Okay, so where are we at? City clerk, I talked too much?
You just need to photo flash.
Okay, ready, ready?
Oh, I was gonna second it, so.
Okay, I think we.
We have a secondary, Counselor Clark and Counselor Ford.
Okay, thank you. I'm confused too by now, by this point in time, I've talked way too much. Anyway, we have the motion, ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Trudy, city treasurer, would you mind inviting? I see Counselor Frank left the door open, he's not supposed to do that either, but would you invite him back into the chambers? Do we have to throw him under the bus for that? We'll let him go tonight, we'll let him go, okay. So we've got that wrapped up, okay, moving on, under public hearings and reports, we have not this evening, and hopefully this is my last long diatribe giving notice proclamation for the United Way Day of Caring. Whereas, United Way Estevan strives to positively impact the quality of life in our community through giving back to our community, family, and friends. And whereas, United Way assigns local volunteers to local projects to make a difference where we live. And whereas, United Way Estevan's Day of Caring organizes teams of volunteers to make significant positive impact in our community, assisting local individuals and nonprofits, agencies to complete projects in the spirit of caring. Be it therefore resolved, I, gee, I've got Lindsay Clark down here, I'll maybe use my name, I, Roy Ludwig, mayor of the city of Estevan, they've got you as deputy, but you know, if, yeah, what's that?
He signed for the newspaper.
Oh, he signed for the newspaper, well, thank you for that, Counselor. See how we all help each other out? We're really all mayors, you know, it's, we're all that close, so it's great. I, Roy Ludwig, mayor of the city of Estevan and the province of Saskatchewan, do hereby proclaim May twenty-fifth, twenty-two as United Way Day of Caring, and urge all citizens of Estevan to recognize and support the goals and objectives of United Way Estevan. So could we have a motion to that effect? Thank you, Counselor Wallezer. Seconded by Counselor Frank, and I'd like to thank all the council members who are United Way directors. We've got Counselor Frank, we've got Counselor Ford, we've got Counselor Groba?
Yeah.
Have we got Counselor Kirsten? Do I hear a Wallezer in here? No, she's thinking about it though, right? Okay, she's thinking about it. Anyway, thank you all for your help in that. So moving forward, motions from committee, we have none, consideration of bylaws, we have none, inquiries, Counselor Groba?
I just have two, your worship.
Okay.
So the first thing was, I was just wondering, city manager, if there is a procedure in place for the pre-planned water, I don't want to use the term breaks, because a lot of times, I think this is the pre-planned water repair, and I believe where the issue came in this time was over on Hastings Place. We had an issue where a neighbor came home, had a hard time getting his driveway, and he just kind of wondered if maybe there was a way the night before, if the city could have at least hung out some kind of a door knocker or something in the mailbox, if there's a way that we could let the people in that neighborhood know to get their vehicles out of the driveways the night before, or something, if we could just maybe look at that?
Okay, yeah, I think Counselor Groba, that's probably a work in progress, and I know from time to time, we're all human, for whatever reason, and there could be a host of reasons, things get forgotten, but I think usually, city manager, we try to put them tripods up if we're gonna do some work on that given block, and then on top of that, we try to get door knockers, do we not, city manager? We try to.
Yeah, thank you, worship, to Counselor Groba's inquiry. Let me look into that one, generally if they're planned, they do identify the people in advance of when they're doing it, so I just need to look into that as specific incidents.
Okay, yeah, and I mean, actually, I like that too, even if there's a sign on the street that said tomorrow, this street's gonna be dug up between this time and that time, at least it gives people a chance, so yeah, no, thank you.
And we apologize for anything that was missed, and again, we're human and we make mistakes.
Yeah, and the person that spoke to me wasn't angry, they just wondered if that was just missed, or if that was something that we had a procedure for, and I said I do believe that we do normally try, and it may have just been something that, you know, last-minute project, hey, we got time, let's go get it done, and he understood completely too, that hundred percent, we're all human, so, no, he wasn't angry in any way, he just asked me if that in the, in the past or in the future, is there actually a procedure? And I said, hundred percent, we have one, I just couldn't tell him exactly what it was at that time.
Okay, thank you for that, and city manager?
Thank you, Counselor Groba, I just got a response about it, and apparently, the street signs were put out the day before, so I don't know if they were missed or if we just need to make them larger or something, we will look at it.
Okay, perfect, no, that's good to know, thank you. And so the other thing I was wondering about is, we've talked about it twice at police board meetings, and with the price of gas going up, I was wondering if us as a council and city manager and you, your worship, if we could somehow advocate to the provincial and federal governments for them to give some sort of a rebate of assistance for the fuel that we need to put into our emergency vehicles, even our city vehicles, I mean, we as municipalities and it's across Canada, across Saskatchewan, we have to have those vehicles on the road, we can't stop getting our patrol cars going around the neighborhood, we can't cut back thirty or forty percent how much time we send them out, the fire trucks can't stop going. So I just think it's irresponsible of the provincial and federal government to not somehow help municipalities out with the emergency funding for fuel. I, you know, it's the tax portion at least, and I know with GST, they came up with a rebate, that was a tax that was never supposed to stay, but somehow they found a way to make sure it stays, and I just feel like with this price of gas rising, there has to be a way that they can do some type of emergency funding, but we need to get the ball rolling with some type of advocacy, and I thought maybe if we just start with us as a council, and maybe with you at the mayor's meeting or the city manager's meeting, and find out if there's other municipalities that would like to join us.
Okay, I can definitely bring it up at the mayor's, the provincial mayor's caucus, and if you like, I can write a letter to the federal government and the provincial government requesting for police and fire, right?
Yes.
That they give us some type of break.
Right, because even, I mean, we go from ambulance to police and fire, those services don't stop, and I mean, even SUMA, SUMA's our advocacy, advocacy group, we're going to FCM in June, we can maybe bring it up there too. There's, we're gonna have a lot of avenues, a lot of people that will probably back us and walk with us on this journey of trying to find a way to still be able to fund our emergency services while finding some sort of relief, so.
Okay, well, we'll start, we'll write letters to the feds, add to the province, and I will bring it up at the mayor's caucus.
Thank you, your worship.
No problem. Counselor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. Just after doing Day of Caring, and I also talked to Pam DeCheff on the response that they've had for volunteers in this community, I just want to make a shout out to those volunteers, everybody that stepped forward in this busy couple of weeks with the Centennial Cup and Day of Caring in the middle of it, and people are just doing much more in this community and as they always do.
Thank you for that, and a big shout out to all our volunteers, I always advocate we have the best volunteers in the province, and I honestly believe we do, and that's really come to the forefront with everything that, as you just mentioned, is happening around our city, and again, we can't thank them enough.
Yes, for sure, I mean, Pam also said that they're signed up and they're showing up, and nobody's missing a shift, so I mean, the positives that come out of that and for what the community's done in this last couple of weeks is just tremendous. Just, at the Fast Gas Corner, somebody has knocked a parking barrier, I believe it's from Fast Gas, but saying on the sidewalk, so just need, I'm not sure whether we need to tell Fast Gas to put it back on their property, but it is on our sidewalk, so if somebody could just check into that.
Sure, we'll have a, we'll have a booth get that taken care of.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Wallezer.
Thank you, your worship. A couple of projects that we spoke about last summer are now starting to come to fruition this summer. I'm wondering if we have an update available to citizens about the timeline for the Churchill Pool opening, as well as the new inflatable trampoline in Royal Heights. Do we have a timeline for when those are being installed?
City manager?
Thank you, worship, Counselor Wallezer, so I was over at the Churchill site today, the plan was hatted in earlier, but with two snowstorms and a significant rain event, it was too, too big to, it was too wet to get in there, so they are digging today, they've outlining the pool. I can get back with, from Paradise Pools, exactly what the timeline is for that. I think we're looking at about a month installation, but I can confirm that, I think we're looking to have it open at some point in July for everyone to use in that area. There is some requirements from public health in regards to a temporary building with proper change room and showers, because we're not building that building likely till next year, so we're hoping to have that all in place for July. And the inflatable, currently Rod March is just away, and he was the one coordinating that, but I can get a update on what the installation of that looks like. I believe it has been installed, there was some supply chain issues at the start of the year getting it here, I believe we do have it now, so I can look into that, get a report back to council.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Wallezer. Counselor Ford?
Thanks, your worship. Last Wednesday, in conjunction with the city, our Innovation Council in Estevan started this open, had the grand opening of the Southeast Innovation Business Development Center, and this very long-winded term is just another place for you to go and start your business and have any business, if you need any business advice, have any tech ideas, need to rent some space for any kind of technology activities you're participating in, it's just kind of like the one-stop shop for business, just in case anybody hadn't heard of it, it's got our SEBSU in it, it's got our coal transition officer, it's got a number of people in it that'll really help businesses and help, help things get going in Estevan if you have a good idea or something in your head that helps, you help, ah, let's try that again, need help developing. A second thing, we still have tickets available for our sportsman dinner on Thursday for the Bruins, there's a number of companies coming to it, there's a number of Centennial Cup participants coming to it, we have a lot of speakers coming to it, we just kind of finalized up the list, we have a number of people who couldn't come or ended up being able to come due to playoffs right now, a lot of them are active announcers in sports and players and whatnot, so it's gonna be a really good, a good list of people coming to speak. Tickets are a hundred dollars or eight hundred for a table, and you can just call the Bruins' office to get tickets. And last off, your worship, if Counselor Frank could borrow your helmet that you got from SUMA, he would really appreciate it, because he almost had a near miss today.
Wow, well, we'll talk about, we'll talk, talk about that, Counselor Ford, when we get to Counselor Frank. Thank you for that, and thank you, Counselor Sernick, for attending, that was appreciated, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had an inquiry into a property on Devonian, Devonian Street, that's in need of some repairs, so I guess where you go from here is that goes to bylaw, and then gets taken from there, city manager?
City manager?
Your worship, Counselor Sernick, yes, we have been identified by that property, and it will be going to bylaw, everything else there in good standing with the city, so we will just get the slightly property bylaw into that property.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Frank, please tell us about your website.
Yes, thank you, worship, what Counselor Ford describes as a near miss, I describe as the greatest save of all of the Centennial Cup, and that was me going out and having to be a dignitary for the puck drop, and the rug slipped out beneath me at twelve o'clock's game today, and I did not fall, I'd like to point that out, but I had a really great save, so that was, that was some entertainment for the whole crowd. I said it's the first time I've ever made the entire crowd at an arena wow when I walked out onto the ice, so, for a guy who can barely skate, I don't know why they trust me to walk on the ice, that's not probably the best idea, so, yes, it was great, and I just want to encourage everybody to make sure you go to all the Centennial Cup games, there's still some tickets, I think, available here and there for some of the daytime games and wherever you can, and there's some trading going on on Facebook, great entertainment, it might even just be entertaining when city councillors walk out on the rug, you don't know who's gonna fall next, so it's, it's good. Yeah, so definitely go out, it was actually a great atmosphere, I was really excited to be there, even at a twelve o'clock game, there's lots of people in the stands, a lot of people talking about how great Estevan is, so that was, that was fantastic. The one other thing I actually had on my agenda, my inquiry list tonight, is a little bit further to what Counselor Groba brought up, I saw an article about this earlier the week, Yorkton has launched through a third-party company, an app that now they can send out communications to residents, it's called Voyant, and I'll send city manager some of the information, but just something to take to your next city manager's meeting or mayor's meetings, it is one where they could send out specific communications to certain areas for people who signed up through text message and things like that, so, looks like a really great way to be able to communicate with the public, I don't know what the costs are or any of the details on that, but Yorkton's bringing it up on CTV News, so I thought that's definitely something, I know you guys meet with them pretty regularly, so if you could.
Awesome.
Chat with them and find out a little bit more about it, something I'd love to see us do in the future, so.
Sure, we'll follow up, thank you, Counselor Frank. City manager, anything this evening?
Thank you, worship, just to, a shout out to everyone who's with Centennial Cup, I know Counselor Kirk mentioned the volunteers, but also the staff over there are putting in a ton of hard work and getting, and then a ton of, well, and the out of scope are putting in their, their efforts as well, so, just Hockey Canada has really been appreciative of the venue, the staffing, everything that's happening there, so just wanted to pass along to council of public that Hockey Canada so far has been very impressed with us, and it bodes well for us to have events like this in the future, and a big, a big part of that is not only council contributing financially, but also the staff putting in the work over there too.
Absolutely, thank you for that, city manager, it's been totally a community event, and it's totally, the community has come to the table in a huge way, not only the volunteers, but everyone on down, like you say, Hockey Canada is so impressed by all of the organizers, all of the volunteers, all of the staff that are just doing yobits work, so it's fantastic. City clerk, anything you'd like to say this evening?
Nothing, your worship.
Okay, city treasurer?
Nothing, your worship.
Okay, with that, I guess we'll move into committee, do we have a motion to move into committee? Counselor Clark, thank you, seconded by Counselor Sernick, ready for the question, those in favor? Thank you so much, we stand adjourned. Thank you, and good evening.